Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order five oh two. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that folks please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will proceed with a roll call. Pam, if you wouldn't mind starting us.
Sure. Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Allison Oliver Schill.
Ms. Smith, Superintendent of.
Carrie Thompson.
Lanta.
Carrie Dzarsowski.
Heather Brown, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
Anna Flanagan, Student Representative.
Anna, want to welcome Anna today as our student rep. Anna, thank you for being here. Uh, we have minutes for approval. I would entertain someone to move to approve them, please.
I'm going to approve this September eighth twenty five regular session.
Motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Is William here? Do you have anybody online? Okay. Um, if you get someone, can you just let me know?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's your first name?
Sean.
Sean, right. Thank you, Sean. Um, okay.
And I have seen.
So motion carries three, two, zero, two, one abstention. And one more, please.
I'm going to approve this September eighth twenty five regular session.
Motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Abstention?
Yep.
Three, zero, one. Okay, thank you all. Committee and subcommittee communications. Allisonella, would you like to start?
I don't have anything ready.
Okay.
Um, I just need to bring and ask, as a group had, we had landed on us all staying consistent with the schools that we as school committee members sort of partner with. Is that correct? From last year.
Excellent question.
With Carrie coming in.
Right. We never have formalized that.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Do you know offhand? What you have?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, because I had reached out to Principal Pearson and then I realized after, oh, I'm not sure if we had formalized that. So I just wanted to bring that up today.
We didn't.
Okay.
Have you done formally any?
No.
Yeah. So in the past, Carrie, we, last couple of years, we designated one school committee member to one of Amy's just asking about that because she reached out already. So um, we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
And I would say continue on and assume that you can do that. I don't think so many wills, but we can certainly open up the rest of them if we want to discuss. Is that right? Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Carrie.
I know Will isn't here, but they had a joint meeting of the Lower Pine Valley Educational Corporation and the collaboration um, last week, on the seventeenth. Um, a mother of a disabled child from Lobo came in to speak of transportation challenges that the Lobo district has been having. They've received like five or six hundred calls, I guess, since the start of the year. And so there was some discussion about that. They were down like six drivers. So a little conversation about some of the uh, challenges that particularly Lobo is having and some discussions they're having within their district as to how they want to move forward and whether they'll be maybe contracting with another company to take some of those routes that are not covered right now.
So that'll be, well, the costs will be shared amongst the districts though, right? If they subcontracted it out.
I don't, it didn't really get much further than that, but it seems like it's challenging. I was learning a little more about a three-tier system versus the districts that have a two-tier and seniority around the bus drivers and picking their routes. And so it seems like the two-tier systems end up with the uncovered routes. Um, and.
Is Lobo still a two-tier, do you know?
Yes.
Okay, because Wilberham just changed from a two-tier and that saved them. And then they got drivers.
Yeah, it made some additional challenges, I think, for families, particularly of like high school teachers and like how they're gonna negotiate getting their kids on the bus and being to school on time. Um, so I mean, those are some things I guess I could be looking at as well, but some students are on the bus for like an hour and a half combining routes. And so in this particular case, um, a student who's nonverbal was dropped off at the wrong house. So, um, anyway, there was some discussion about that, um, refinancing of a bond, um, which we approved, um, reviewed the balance sheet, um, discussion about the electric buses, revisiting a little bit of the um, incident that happened in the Wilberham garage. There's twenty-five buses out and.
They're using the electric buses now. I've seen them in use. Great.
Yeah, I'm part of, I guess, the decision of who has more of the buses. I think twelve might be at one. Um, was because of wherever the charging stations are and the distance of their routes from the charging stations. So some discussion about that. But really, it was a lot about driver shortage, union contracts, that kind of thing.
Excellent.
And that will stay for the second half of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, Carrie. Anna?
Um, so last week at the high school, we had homecoming week. So we had a lot of fun events like senior sunrise. We had a pep rally on Friday. We had powder puff on Saturday and the seniors beat the freshmen. Um, we also had our club fair on Friday with, we had over twenty clubs now. We had a few new additions, including best buddies, which is, um, helping integrate differently-abled people into our school events and our sports events. Um, we also have a new student-run Elcat sports show called E L H S The Showdown, which, um, has been pretty popular and showcases like sports clips. And we've had a lot of increase in like student participation at sporting events, which I think that's really helping too. So.
Excellent.
That on social media then, or?
Um, it's on Elcat and it's also on social media. So, yep.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you, Anna. Okay, moving along, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee if anyone here is looking to do so. Seeing none. We'll move on. We have the Assistant Superintendent for Business report. We have the Athletic Director talking about the U S T A grant.
Kevin, thanks for coming in. Um, so rewind to last spring, we had three tennis courts. Um, and I want to thank the school committee and the school department for the way that you supported the tennis program. Uh, we ended up hiring extra coaches, doing four practices back-to-back, using indoor um, tennis space for the first two weeks when weather was an issue. We had all away matches. And uh, because of the school committee's support, um, and the school department's support, our tennis programs really excelled with only three tennis courts. Uh, the girls' team made it to the Western Mass semifinals and the boys' program won the Western Mass championship for the second year in a row in a three-hour match that was probably one of the best sporting events I've ever been to. Um, so, um, fortunately, the, the families and the tennis players and the coaches really um, had a great season last year. And one of the things that we did was, we applied for a grant from the U S T A. Uh, and the U S T A grant was really meant to, um, support schools that are looking to provide the best school tennis experience for their players and coaches. So we applied for that grant last spring and uh, they ended up giving us a grant for a thousand dollars to reimburse for some of those extra expenses last spring. So I talked to Pam about it and she said that I should come in and kind of talk about it. Um, because it's ultimately the school committee's decision to accept the grant.
Right, yeah, to formally officially accept it. And then I'll set it up for you and. It was. Close.
Ms. McGee, did you want to mention, uh, in terms of the application, why it's, uh, varsity?
The application was for the boys' tennis program. Our girls' tennis coach is very involved with the U S T A and she was the one that um, said that we should apply for it, but she said, um, it would be better to apply under the boys' tennis program just so that um, she wouldn't have to. The fact that she's very involved with the U S T A was an easier application through the boys' tennis program.
And no conflict of interest.
And the great thing is, um, they, they gave us the maximum amount that they can give a school or a high school in the area, which was awesome.
Congratulations.
Hey, any questions for McGee? If not, I would entertain someone to move to accept a thousand dollars from U S T A.
To accept the a thousand dollar U S T A as per.
Made by Amy.
I think.
By Allisonella. Discussion. This is going into what account, Pam?
I'll have to say.
A new account.
Yes, a, a new fund in Munis. So I'll set that up, um, as soon as I can for you and get him the account number so he can spend.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. That carries four to zero. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Problem.
And his courts are looking good out there.
Coming along. Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Pedal still. Season.
Okay, moving right along, we have, uh, an update for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the Food Service Department from Food Service Director Lori Paul.
Lori, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having me. On day eighteen, but I've come with a couple of things I included in your packet just to give you an update um, for this coming school year. Uh, we did get a nice increase in our reimbursement rates for, um, our meals, both for lunch and for breakfast. Um, we serve breakfast at all five schools. So, um, we got a seventeen cent increase. Um, three and a half percent increase for the lunch, as well as breakfast, we got a ten cent increase. Um, we are still trying to navigate through some of the local grants that, um, were, uh, cut or eliminated. Um, I know we, we briefly spoke of it. Um, we had currently the, um, last school year of the Northeast Food for Schools, all of the state of Massachusetts had, um, over three point five million dollars that went to all local source funding for, um, foods. It was slated to come in for this school year at twelve point two million dollars for the state of Massachusetts. And that was eliminated by the federal government. Um, we still do have some things we tap into. Um, I'm still using some local, um, and one of your, I did a, I did a fun pick. Uh, we just had, um, sloppy doughs last Wednesday and I went around, took pictures, um, using Arnold's, uh, ground beef local, um, to us. So I do try to use local whenever we can. And I do still have funds, um, that I allocate every year from my entitlement for the um, D O D, which is the Department of Defense. And that is, um, it's a federal program and we didn't lose all our funding for that. Um, I was cut down on it a little bit, but I still have funds to use. So, uh, we do try to bring in all fresh local, um, um, and when we can. Um, they did, I did look up, there is some grants out there that they're saying they could do to supplement. Some of them really don't pertain to us. Um, the E O S Foundation is doing breakfast in the classroom grants, which I did already get years ago when we started up at Maple Shade and the E O S grant. Um, so none of the other schools really be eligible because they don't do breakfast in the classroom. Uh, there is a Patrick Leahy Farm to School Grant. But it has a huge educational piece attached to it. So it would, I think, be very difficult to get that, um, going in time. Uh, it has a December fifth um, deadline, but it, it's, um, it has a huge agricultural education piece to it. So that might be too much. Then they have a kids gardening, um, grant, small grant. Um, that deadline's coming up. I don't really have any resources unless somebody's really into gardening and wants to do a really quick, small grant. Um, and then they have one, I didn't really look into it because it is based on your population of, uh, free and reduced students. It's a growing justice fund to find equitable food purchases. Um, and technically, usually the fifty percent or more, uh, the free and reduced stu- um, communities are the ones that, um, are usually afforded something like that. So I, I didn't really even pursue that. Um, but I might have a little something in my back pocket. But yeah, Pam knows. Um.
That'll be in the next meeting.
Um, so that was my, my first point. Uh, we have a lot of new staff. That's my other talking point. Um, I had a lot of retirements, so a lot of resignations at the end of last year, which really threw me for a loop. We just are onboarding six new staff members, which is a huge undertaking. I had not a single staff member at Maple Shade going into the start of the school year. Um, but I have three amazing staff that I think are really gonna, um, make it their own and, and um, really do a great job there. So I'm very happy about that. Um, we did a lot of rearranging, um, shifts, adding shift hours, um, because we had to cover now breakfast, breakfast in the classroom, uh, you know, walking breakfast, the whole bit. Um, so a lot of the staff had a lot of hours changed. Um, we did get accepted into a culinary training program, which I am tickled pink about. Um, because I do, I don't have strong staff. Um, but this is with the John Stalker Institute and it is called officially, they're calling it C cap. It's creating and executing advancement plan. And they come on board and they work with us for twelve weeks with a chef coach and train, um, and help us implement best practices and prepare the staff for the state-of-the-art new kitchen equipment that's coming in the new school. Um, and I think it's a great way to reinvest our funds, um, directly back into the program and our staff because it does, um, cost, um, nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the twelve-week program, but I did have to apply to get into it. But I think it's a really great use of our funds. Um, let's see. We are still, uh, C E P and universal free meals for everybody. That means all students are offered one no-charge breakfast and one no-charge lunch each day. Um, that hasn't changed. We did start our C E P program last year, so that's our base year. Um, and technically, we're in C E P for four years. Um, and it's based on the student eligibility. I am a little bit nervous because the numbers change. Um, and they will revisit this and look at our free eligible numbers in the F Y twenty-eight year, um, to see if we still fall into the eligible, um, provision program. Uh, so that might be a little hiccup. Um, but what it means ultimately right now is there's no meals form that the children have to fill out if, or the families, um, if they are interested in getting a free and reduced meal and they didn't come directly certified. Um, but our district, we came up with an alternate income financial assistance form that they can use. Um, if maybe the state didn't certify them as free, they can apply, um, directly with the school district to see if maybe they can get some services at a reduced cost.
Those forms no longer go through, uh, the school lunch department. They're going through the central office. Just to let you.
This is in addition to the free lunch and free breakfast.
Doesn't.
Outside services.
By.
Well, because we don't offer the free and reduced meals application like we normally did, did the federal, um, form that we filled out because we are C E P. Um, we only have to record the free eligible. So there might be families that might be on the cusp of needing some assistance. And if they apply and they fall within the, you know, guideline set, they could maybe qualify for a, a reduced busing or sports or something.
The way this works is, um, Lori is in a, um, a very secure portal, uh, for the direct certification, direct certified students who come through automatically. So Lori knows how to code them. Um, just because there's different reimbursement rates behind the scenes, you get more um, reimbursement, correct, for the, um, free and reduced?
Well, it keeps.
Not anymore.
The rate is the exact same?
Right.
I don't know why I thought that that was different.
It qualifies what it does, right? It qualifies the district based on the numbers that.
The percentage, right.
And which.
Right. And so those folks who, um, feel that they really do need some help and maybe they are very close, they can submit this alternate form to the central office here and we, we review that.
Right.
The only reason then why they would submit it would be for busing and.
Correct, yes.
So if they are not in need of either, then they may not apply, even though they may, um, be eligible. I'm sure that's happening.
It could be. And then we could do maybe a SNAP outreach. Um, I know Massachusetts is really, um, tries to, to do those programs because I think you can become like, um, an advocate or something where we can have somebody within the district doing like help with applying for SNAP benefits. And then that would put them in this direct certification portal and, and offer them the help they might need that they aren't getting directly through the state.
Is that what you were worried about in two thousand and twenty-eight, that we may fall below the percentage required, necessary to get the program?
For the, yes, for C E P. Um, because that's solely based on what the information from the state already knows. These are free eligible children. So our, like, free and reduced percentages, um, are they have been falling. And I wrote, so for example, in school year twenty-two, we were at thirty-three percent. At school year twenty-three, we were twenty-nine percent. School year twenty-four, we were twenty-nine percent. And then just last month, which I didn't, you know, it's it's a very short month, August, I still had to put in the claim in. Um, we were at twenty-six percent free eligible students.
When did we start C E P? Two years ago?
This year. Was the twenty twenty-four was the, because the federal government at twenty-five percent. Part of the Massachusetts program said, well, as soon as you hit that twenty-five percent indicator, we need you to apply for C E P because then Massachusetts gets more money.
That's what it is.
Reimbursed from the, yeah, because we're, we're straight across the board. We get the same reimbursement of the, uh, four seventy-four for a lunch. Better what? Because the state tributes and the federal government, because we're universal free meals within the Massachusetts budget. So they wanted, so Massachusetts wants to draw more from the federal government, which happens if you're C E P.
But if we're not C E P, then we would still receive the full reimbursement from the state.
Mm-hmm.
But that may be in jeopardy if other districts follow the same route. Is that what you're worried about? In twenty-eight?
No, though, so.
Out of C P.
When you're in C E P, it gets, um, analyzed by the state every four years. They'll, they recalculate your numbers.
Right, and so.
We're disadvantaged if we weren't in the C E P. Um, more forms to fill out. I mean, right, for like if free and reduced meals, um, and it's disadvantaged the state.
Right. The state would lose federal funding.
Would lose more, right, they would be, the state would be having to front more monies. Yeah. So we're doing it for the benefit of the state of Massachusetts. But we're right on that cusp. But the thing is, then after four years, to make sure we notify the families, you used to fill out a form, then you didn't fill out a, you need the form again. It's.
Right, but they don't have as much incentive now if they don't need the buses or the athletics. What's the incentive to fill the form out? Which is, by some may not, yeah.
Yes, very true. And we can do, I think they have a, like a SNAP outreach. You can become a local. I can look into that. You know, where the families who are in need maybe not, you know, stepping forward and they can, you know, get information.
But I think the calls that we receive more so, just as you're saying, when bus fees are being discussed,
athletic fees are being discussed, that's, that's what we receive in central.
And we also let families know, just to anybody out there watching, I don't see anybody now, but maybe, maybe later they'll be watching, um. You know, if, if someone needs some help, we are always willing to set up, you know, uh, payment plans, Kevin, on the athletic side and us with the, with the buses and, you know, so we just need people to just communicate with us. That, that's all. We're here as a.
Do we say that on the forum, the bus forum?
Uh, I, I believe we do, yeah. I believe we do.
In, as far as the C E P, uh, program that it would, I don't know how you would inform people to fill out the other financial form, but I don't know how you incentivize that.
Well, it, it does, I mean, I don't, it's, it's on my website, like, you know, welcome, this is our school lunch for this, you know, everybody receives a no-charge meal, but if you feel that you may need additional help in other avenues, we have this forum. It's, it's, everything's on the website, link to it. Um, yeah, I think it's gonna be more of a if and when it changes, how to, you know, get that different message out.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we, we have a few years then, though, you said twenty-eight is when we'll have to look at.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine? Or is it, would we need to be communicating next year in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
No, it'd be twenty-eight because it's, you go till the, it would be the twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Because they would make that termination from the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year.
Right.
Because that would be the fourth year. It's a full four-year cycle.
Full four years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so twenty.
Yeah.
May, may twenty-four, yeah.
So we have two more cycles.
Yes, yes.
What trend we're on, yeah.
Exactly.
Lori, how has the, um, anticipation been going?
Yeah, we've had a, um, increase in participation, both for, um, breakfast and lunch. Again, we're only, we just completed day eighteen today. So I don't have the end of the month figures yet for here, but, um, just looking back, we used to have about fifty percent participation, um, which was about, um, twelve hundred meals a day. And we're up to looking at June's figures, fifty-six percent participation. So, um,
wow.
Yeah, we've increased like six percent of a hundred and forty meals a day. And then the addition of breakfast is like.
How was it going?
Crazy. Um, we don't have that big of a participation in breakfast, but I think it's been really beneficial for the ones that.
That needed it.
You can, you can tell. Um, yeah, and I think it's a matter of, you know, just timing and a lot of the different home things going on, but.
Yeah, it's nice you say that. It reminds me, Lori, at the end of the year, um, Lori received a really, really nice letter from, and I think I sent it to the school committee then, from a student who was graduating with a huge thank you. It was very emotional. I kind of got teary-eyed when I read it, like, just saying how much the people there through that line have meant to this person who and helping them with food without ever asking any questions when they, it just was really touching. And it just goes to show that everybody in a school district, no matter who we are, what our role is, that we make a, make a difference, you know, to, to students, and students make a difference to us. And, um, yeah, so I thank you for all you do, Lori.
Absolutely.
There was one other thing that you have a very healthy balance, which is always, um, you know, the committee always gets really curious about what your projects are, um, and what's lined up. So maybe you could elaborate a little bit on that for us.
Basically, I'm trying to redo all the serving lines at each of the elementary schools. They are in desperate need of it. Um, and I've been in the works for almost a year now with the Maple Shade because that's the, the most problem one, if you will. And we've had to come to the board two, three, four, five times. Um, because it's small demo. Um, you know, disrupting floor, disrupting walls, disrupting. So I think we have a solution and hopefully we'll have a serving line, um, there in December with our creative, um, overlay, if you will. But we desperately need that. And then actually, I'm meeting, um, my, um, consultants Thursday for getting better figures for both Mountain View and Meadowbrook. It's just, the hot serving wells are failing, the sneeze guards are missing sides. So we're, they want to just make sure we bring, um, all our kitchens up to working order, you know, just to make sure this food's safe and, you know, the ease of the staff working. Um, and I think just investing in our staff and and everything in all our kitchens. And those are, serving lines are a little over fifty thousand dollars each. So, you know, three of them takes a big hit. What else do I have planned?
Got it all.
And everything's just breaking.
Lori, you've been working with, um, the architects, uh, Dory Jones, what's it, for the new building, correct? Are you ready for that move and?
No.
Oh, you're not ready?
I have, I have little to no information, although I, I sit twelve feet from it going on outside my window. Um, no, I did speak with Dory early on and then, um, the kitchen designer, um, I forgot her name, um, and have some workings on. But yeah, I'm getting a little nervous of what is actually gonna happen over there. And then I had a, um, engineer came by Friday for our equipment auction.
Do you want to give more detail on that?
Sure, okay. So, um, the first thing you were talking about, I believe, is the, um, the actual bid documents for the new equipment. The new equipment. That was what we were going through. That's where you probably sat with Dory on um last spring. And then Stefira is the consultant on the equipment and furniture. So you went through your.
Well, she had.
Uh, were going to be ordered and then part of the bid package?
Yes and no. She gave me a book of equipment that's gonna be in, in the school. And then they asked me to have a workup of smallwares that might be.
Salvaged?
Not salvaged, for the purchases. They wanted a list of what we think we need um to furnish the new kitchen. With this new equipment.
Right, okay.
And I haven't heard from anybody else since.
And that's the, that's where they are right now. So they're creating the bid documents this fall, so that those bid documents can.
Okay.
Go out and um be bid upon. And then the engineers coming around and going to all departments and taking an inventory of all of our equipment.
Yes.
Because the equipment that either is not um utilized by other schools or other departments in town. We do have to publicize, uh, publicize in some way to see if other organizations might be interested in. Bidding on those in some type of auction. Uh, and so that's, that's where the visit most recently came from.
Yes, yeah, he, he did a little mini tour and.
And after we get through those uh meetings, the next group of meetings will be. What do we do to prepare to move out for. Basically, the end of June, July, um, the weeks of August. So stay tuned on that one.
Oh, okay, because we'll be, yeah, I'm getting nervous of what.
We all are.
What's gonna?
We don't have, we don't have, don't have that clue. Is, are things leaving? Are you taking things from here to other kitchens? Do you have that planned?
Um, I, I am probably gonna try to, yes, move and repurpose um some items. And then obviously some items, if they aren't gonna be brought in new. Um, again, little, you know, smallwares type things, I will certainly be looking through what my existing stock is. And saving everything. Um, but everything I have here is not salvageable.
And that's fine. Because that, the, the kitchen, I'm sorry. The, the kitchen in the high school, that's gonna be brand new. However, things that might be salvageable can be used elsewhere. That's where the inventory decisions get made. If we can use it elsewhere, that's ideal.
Right, oh yeah, for my smallware, oh absolutely. Well, and there's a lot of things that aren't used on a regular basis, like our coffee pots for convocation. Okay, you know, we have to do something with, we're not gonna like not take them with us, you know what I mean? We have to do something with.
They're gonna be part of the inventory. If we're not gonna utilize them in other kitchens, then they might be something that goes up for auction.
Right, no, I'm gonna try to save all that stuff that you know is viable, used once or twice a year. I'm not gonna get rid of it and.
Because Lori will have the chance to inventory what she's gonna keep. So when they finish the inventory, all the departments can continue that and figure out, you know, we're gonna.
Okay, because he only took like the big um equipment, if you will, like the oven, the steam jacket kettle, the.
Okay, so if there's other things, then we'll have to send him back.
He said he was gonna come around because it was a little too overwhelming with, you know, oh, I have, I, yeah, you know, I have a hundred and fifty. Hotel pans, four inch, two inch, whatever. He was like, yeah, that's not today.
And, and he's doing that same type of inventory for the science department for um. I don't know if he's doing I T or whether Ryan's doing that, but uh, he's doing it in each department. So then we have decisions to make, because there's a lot for the high school that will be new. There'll be some things fewer that are salvaged and moved over. And then there'll be some that we may use in other schools. Berchlin's interested in a bunch of the student desks, the ones that um are still in great condition. They would like to at least a classroom, if not two classroom. In terms of number of desks, so figure twenty five, fifty desks.
Right.
Or in there.
Right, yeah, so we'll have to, and it's hard because we just started the school year, so I think we, we need everything right now.
That, that's what he's finding, he's, he's running up against everybody's schedule.
Yeah.
And there won't be any food here, any, uh, obviously at the end of the school year, because they're gonna close the door at the last day of school and that's it.
Right, and, and I usually going into this, into the summer, because we, we are closed typically, we really, our inventory is low. And after my recent, I mean, I had the Meadowbrook freezer replaced, the Virgin Park freezer replaced, we just. Re-move things around, so yeah, that, that one's not an issue. Yeah, it's more of the, like the smallwares, you know. Can we, we want to take the hotel pans, we want to take.
Yeah, so the last.
Take the.
The last couple of weeks, start getting them out of here and bring them to where they're gonna go, I would suggest, so that last day of school, we're done.
They, they want us out of here as quick as possible.
I'll move it out. Us out by April vacation.
Am I able to, uh, am I able to get a, a storage pod or?
Do you have that much stuff here?
I don't do have that much, that needs to be.
Pretty big kitchen, because we cook here for two other schools, so we have.
Are they going to the new building, the things you're talking about?
Some of them might, yeah.
Those things will go into storage. We are gonna hire a mover who will take them. And either put them somewhere in the new building or somewhere offsite.
Okay.
So that will solve that problem. The other issues would be going to the other schools, the things you need.
Yeah, that we can.
Not big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, we can whittle away.
Easy enough for us, right?
I guess, according to your point about talking about size, like, is there like a timeline for transition planning? Like that.
So there's.
Sort of get.
Skanska um has a set timeline. What we need to do is. Uh, once they finish the inventory, meet and get that really clear, so that we can start messaging that out to all the departments. Yeah.
Seems like something like that would be helpful for folks.
Yes, absolutely. Skanska, by the way, is the O P M, I'm sorry.
And that's all. If there's any other question?
I would, I believe, is that. Yeah, he's from.
Yes, yes, he will, yes. Even though he had a Fontaine shirt on. Um, and always, anybody's always welcome to come join us for lunch. I hope you're enjoying lunch.
And the, and it's like great, all the fresh fruit and veggies.
I know.
Yeah, and this literally, Pam had asked me to come and I said, oh, I gotta have something. This is literally what was out on Wednesday. That's our Wednesday, what our lunch looked like. So I'm like. So, um, join us at any time.
Great, sounds good. Thank you, Lori, for coming tonight. Appreciate it. The microphones? Did Amy that's off? Because it's behind this, so if you're gonna be in audible. Oh yeah, Heather, can you grab the wire off that one?
Suck at this end, Heather, yeah, right there. Looks like it's.
It is taped, taped.
Oh.
Oh yeah, it's, it's good. See if I can loosen it a little bit.
Oh, somebody's in the audience, Sean? Who is it?
Julia, okay.
Okay, that's all right. They, they're just watching. Thank you, though. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. No, thank you, Don. I moved my uh monitor, because I saw mine was in front as well, so. Okay, proceed.
So your last item here is a, have a request from uh Principal Renee Lodi at Meadowbrook. Uh, to accept a gift of five hundred dollars from Grin and Barrett Photography as the renewal bonus, so that will go into their. Gift account and be used for, you know, items for the whole school.
If someone would like to move the acceptance of that, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the five hundred dollar check from Grin and Barrett Photography. To be deposited into the Meadowbrook School Gift Account.
And made by Antonella, seconded by Amy. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries four to zero.
Thank you, I'll get that deposited.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, moving right along. We have discussion on the superintendent search process. As you all know, um, last meeting, we began to outline and actually appoint a few members of the committee. I know there's questions that some want to discuss today. In our uh meeting, preparing for this meeting, in our agenda meeting, we did establish a list of. Um, groups that we have asked or are gonna ask to include on the committee. Um. Do you have that, Heather, handy by chance? Let me put that together. Um, and I've identified ten slots, including the three that this committee uh appointed last week. The ten slots that would be designated so far. And. So it would be the two school committee members. Um, as of now, we have one administrator. We have two unit A members.
How's the school, the administrator picked?
It was gonna be a lottery. There were two interested, and then it was gonna be a lottery of the two that were interested.
And we thought that there should be a conversation here at the committee level, if there maybe should be the two. One is a principal and one is a central office administrator. Also, there was interest, Samantha um was interested in uh.
Yeah, she had mentioned that last meeting, and said she'd be willing or able to make this kind of.
Well, I'm sorry then, I shouldn't have even interrupted. Who are the rest of the people?
Two unit A. One unit E, which is the pair of professionals.
Cleric.
Oh, well, we don't have a clerical locked in yet.
Okay.
We have the student. We had talked to students potentially. Right now, we have asked the principal to ask for one, based on the conversation that happens tonight, so we can. Visit that as part of it. And was that ten?
So the community member, the parent.
The three that were already appointed.
The typical committee.
Wait, so there's three community members? Is that what it is?
Two, and the parent, the P T O uh president and the.
So two community members, one parent.
And we're left with three slots now. If we go to thirteen, which was what we decided last meeting, was the magic number. In coordination with our M A S C advisor. Ten, right?
I'm trying to, like, two unit A, one unit E, one student, two community members, one parent, one admin. It's ten.
All right, so I had put two admin on here when that was up in the clerical, so that's why the numbers are different.
Right, if you.
It's not set in stone yet.
Right, yeah. Question.
Can I ask a quick question about the two terms we've been using? We've been using the term screening committee and search committee. Interchangeably, and I just want to make sure that I have a good understanding of what exactly we're talking about when we say that. So from my understanding, the screening committee is this thirteen, um, you know, member group that they're tasked with. Um, obviously, looking through the initial applications that come in and then presenting to. The, the school committee, which then becomes the search committee, I guess. Like, is, is it, am I thinking of it incorrectly, like, almost like? Years, like.
It is two tiers, exactly. I wouldn't call us the search committee, right, because they all search, I use search and screen interchangeably. But yes, they will, the M A S C will screen down all those who are qualified for the job first.
So the M A S C does that?
Qualified.
That's completely objective.
If you're, no, it's not.
I'm asking you.
Well, how? So they'll go through and uh the M A S C uh field rep who's helping direct the search. Will go through and make sure that licensure is there, um, whatever. And um, she comes back and she presents, Tracy Novick is her name, the field director, so. When Tracy comes back and she's presenting, here's the information from the community survey that's out. And that's broken down. That's gonna give you an idea of, of certain elements that. The school committee is gonna prioritize for looking for candidates, and that's gonna be used um. By not only first the M A S C, but then this first committee to look at the candidates that um. Remain, once the M A S C has gone through them, and use that as their criteria for looking for candidates to interview in the first round.
So are we to approve that? So in my experience, that you get like a rubric. That they're gonna be using to screen, like, are we gonna see that to approve before the?
I would imagine you would. That's something that Tracy would, would provide, because she's going to, in that schedule. Train all of them on how to screen and um. Uh, anti-bias training and so forth, and that's their very first meeting, which I think is November.
And so after that process, the screening process then begins, say we have eight people, I'm just throwing out a number. Um, that M A S C has identified and brought to the screening committee, then it's up to the screening committee to conduct. That first round of interviews, review the resumes, et cetera, et cetera, and then in, in theory, they could say, okay, we have these top three candidates. Type of thing. And then, then those top three candidates would then come to the five-member school committee. Is sort of then serving as a search, a little search committee in and of itself, however, as soon as we get into the finalist. Portion of it, we're then subjected to open meeting law.
That is the finalist section. So when the, the three that they sent to us, those are the finalists, right? And so they'll.
So those are always the finalists, like we, there's no round two.
We're gonna ask, will collectively decide, send us three or four? Yes, and whomever they send us, any of which could qualify to be superintendent, it'd be Salimento, right? M A S C will say all these people are certified or certifiable, and if they're not, those are the ones that that group won't see, just those. That's what they screen out. And then the screening committee does interviews, and they will push forward three or four, and then we do site visits. The candidates will come here with us, we'll meet with them, they meet with us, and then we do formal interviews, all three.
Just wanted to make sure. I mean, some of it's just questions for Tracy, but like in that initial screening, will the resumes be like? Names removed, that sort of thing when they're going through to screen?
No, because they know, they know the people, they're not removed, the names of candidates.
From the beginning application pool, in terms of bias training, like I've been on search committees where part of it is.
Yeah, I don't.
Gonna remove names for any identifiers.
Um, if they're, it depends on how they're planning to do it. If they do paper documents, they can do that. If they do. Straight up use of school spring, that would be more challenging to do digitally.
Yeah, I only raise it to, because it's when, when you might have candidates that might be known, might come from the area. It helps to make it more, as, nothing is completely unbiased, but a cleaner process. We can re, can we request that from Tracy? If that's.
Conversation with Tracy and see what she recommends, maybe, if that's okay, yeah.
I mean, but once they're through, then you would have names, like.
And they have to come out in public, publicly, yes, yeah, and that's their decision. They can decide not to come as a finalist. If we say you're one of four, they may say, well, I don't want to be it, so then they would not be named at that point until they agree to be named, yeah.
And we're only visiting schools and such of the finalists.
Correct. Other questions, comments?
Is there going to be anything that goes out to the community if anyone wants to be a part of this committee, of the steering committee?
I share that concern.
So we have the other three slots that are not filled right now, right? And if that's how we decide we want to fill those three. If you want to go to fifteen, we could go to more.
Right, but I just want to make sure that we're staying consistent with how we're putting people on this committee. And I don't really know if it's really our job as a school committee to choose. Community members to be on it. I feel like it should have just kind of just went out to the community, whoever was interested, a parent. Or community members, put their name in, and they're just chosen at random. Um, because now I feel like we already have and.
Or with some intentionality in that we're trying to have a diverse representation. Right, and I, I don't know what it was like with Gordons in terms of like interests, um. But I've been getting those kinds of questions, like, and again, I don't think who we have. I'm not saying it has anything to do with their qualifications to be on it.
No.
Have more than one CEO, president or vice president.
We have more than one CEO, president or vice president who might be feeling like they wanted to be asked.
And the opportunity wasn't even given.
Right, right. So folks are asking, and it, and I don't, you know, I said, I don't really have an answer as to say how you can express interest in, in that some of the positions are defined by unions, et cetera.
I also think it's interesting though, and I think we're trying to do a good job in getting so much representation. But the bottom line is, as a five-member school committee in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it is out within our right, we could just huddle up the five of us and make the decision, just the five of us. We're, we're doing a good thing, I think, by putting it out. But to your point, Antonella, I think since we've done that, let's make sure we're, you know, representing and doing. But like the bottom line is, this is the main and sole responsibility. Like this is our biggest job as a school committee, like hands down is our biggest job. And so having 15, like it's great. I love that we're having the representation, but also like, you know, community members coming in saying like, oh, we didn't get a chance. No, that's not how the process necessarily always works. This is how it was designed in the Commonwealth. And we could literally just pull the plug and say, we're going to take a vote and do this in-house. We're not going to do that. But I think it's also important messaging for people in town to understand, we've all been trained in this. Like, you know, we've spent any given number of years understanding the roles and responsibilities of a school committee. Number one responsibility of a school committee, period.
But we also, we do get the final say.
Yeah, absolutely.
With whatever gets brought to us.
Absolutely.
But I also would want to hear the community's input as well. Because our school system impacts a lot of people in this, in this town.
Without question, of course.
So it's, for me, it's really important that we have that input from outside as well.
And we will have listening sessions. We're going to run plenty of those to get input and give folks an opportunity then.
Would it not be okay, would it be okay to open it up and offer the role to another community member? Like we have, if we have the space in the community or in the breakdown of.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. We have three slots that are non-committed right now. And so it's, well, because we did talk to one or two students, that was one of it.
Another Heather to read.
I wish you could hook up.
What we have right now.
It might be for other people to see it too, watch it.
That's it, that's all we had.
But can you just read the list again? You have one administrator, two unit A, one unity, one student, correct?
So I have a community member, parent, community member, so two community members, parent, one student, two teachers, one admin, two school committee members and a pair professional.
So you have two community members, you're missing a parent, I think.
No, she's a parent. Two school committee members, one administrator, two unit A, one para, one student, two community members and one parent.
Yes, so you have three there. I don't, did you have that, three?
Three.
I don't know if we're calling them community members or we're calling.
Two, one, we're calling a parent, two, we're calling community members.
Yeah.
I think Tracy was also pretty, she was really encouraging us to not approach that 15 number. She was saying that 13.
Well, we could do 13, yeah, yep.
But don't we only just have 10?
We have 10 right now.
Right. And so initially we had talked and we had 13.
We didn't have the full 13 because we had the one or two student possibility. And there was some ambiguity in the discussion. And so when we reviewed the list after, we came up with the 10 as is.
One or two admin as well.
And one admin represents being a principal and one represents.
Central office. They, they both know that their names could possibly be discussed tonight. They're both okay with that, just to let you know.
So the question is stay at 13? Is that a good number? Do we decide to stay at that? If we want to go to, if we believe there's a need for others, we can go to 15. I don't have a problem with that. It's our search, we can do it how we want.
I mean, I guess, like to Antonella's point, I just, in whatever pockets it might be, by putting a call out, we have some flexibility depending on who raises their hands. I mean, we have a lot of different people in our.
But you gave two different ways of choosing them though. We'd have to be in agreement on how to pick though, because you wanted to be specific and deliberate about it. Whereas you wanted more of a random opportunity for some.
For me, I think from the very beginning, when I became part, part of what I wanted to be as a member of the school committee was really being transparent and, and open about communication. And I think, I hear your point, but I think it's important, we're here for the community to. And so I think it's important to be, you know, transparent and provide good communication about how we're proceeding. And I think the questions are sort of, come up when we haven't really said how we're doing it or define the makeup or if you're interested what to do. So, um, I don't know, I get a little uncomfortable, sort of like.
You want to just leave the three positions open and put it out, a general call to anyone interested? But I would think we should decide how to proceed now in terms of how we're going to pick them instead of not.
I mean, should there be two administrators? Should there be a clerk?
Yeah. One represents being a principal and one represents the special ed background, so.
And I feel like those are two really valuable perspectives.
Yeah. And I don't know what the, what the principal is, but, and, and I'm not an expert, but I think a lot of times superintendent pools come from folks who have been mostly in the high school space. And so if this were maybe a.
Elementary principal.
An elementary principal, that might be nice to have that perspective.
Yeah, it's an elementary principal.
On the search. And I don't know, I'm just, you know, a tier. Right.
Well, I mean, we could do, add the administrator and the clerk and then open the last spot or go to 15 and open three spots. Or not add those two.
And we also have a student here who we could ask their perspective about having one student versus two. If we want to do that.
My question is, how is the student going to be chosen? Like we spoke earlier, like it was going to be lottery. Like I'm a little worried about a lottery because like what if someone puts their name in? And they're like, not like they don't have like a perspective like me, like I'm sitting here and seeing what you guys think. But they've like never even like watched a school committee meeting. They have no idea what a superintendent does, like what? And if it's a lottery, they get picked and they have no idea, you know?
Yeah, and that's understandable and that's.
It happens in the community.
That's what the conversation is kind of about. It, it's the fair way to do it. I agree with you because some know more and are more interested than others, yeah.
And hopefully, you know, when you're contracting with a search firm and there's, you know, there's training and some discussion qualifications, those things will be put forward to maybe help a little bit.
When the lottery, you know, comes out, it'll be explained thoroughly that it's a huge responsibility for a student. So hopefully students that aren't really as involved or don't have as much background, they might not really want to necessarily step up once they realize it's a really big commitment to do that, really big.
Do you think having one student would hamper them from sharing their thoughts? As opposed to having two, yeah?
I think one would be better because like what if the two students have conflicting views, you know? Like different experiences within, like if, like I am very involved in like everything that's in school. But like if the other student wasn't, like they would have a completely different like, you know?
Sounds like we might need to go to 15, but get the rep, kind of representation that we want and to have it feel fair and inclusive.
I do think when we go out, if we're going to or in any discussions and building, it wasn't like entirely clear from Tracy what that schedule might look like. But she really reiterated the point that folks need to be, everybody needs to be there and they have to be free on these dates. So it might be nice to be able to, can't guarantee like every Wednesday night or something, but like as defined as we can, so you can ensure that the people who say they want to do it can do it. Like we talked about, a student athlete in season would not be a good choice.
So she's giving you those timelines, but you're saying like more specific as we.
Or that I don't know how we've had conversations.
From six to eight every night.
That we're, whoever we're talking to about this or, you know, as we're selecting, we're clear about community, what the time commitment would be.
Yes. The other issue is we have to pick the, the two school committee members. William's not here tonight. Should we wait to discuss that?
I would rather wait until he's here.
Okay. Do we want to cap it at 13? We get there today?
It depends on who the other three people are.
Fair.
And did I mishear you? Did you say you've had some, like you talked about some suggestions earlier or?
No, that was just, no, yeah.
Okay.
The 10 plus the administrator and then, uh, executive secretary. Or the other two above the 10, but those aren't anything, it's up to this committee. We're going to 15? You don't know?
I don't know.
Who do you want, do you have suggestions for the three?
I'm conflicted with the community member and the, and the parent because I want it to go out to everyone so that they have an opportunity to put their name in at least. But then we already have that representation on here. So it's, that's where I'm conflicted with, right, right there.
Well, do you want to go out to one more parent at least?
And I mean, I think that the other people that we've mentioned here, the other administrator and the other clerk, those are valuable representations. I feel like they should be on it.
So what if we do those two and one more parent out to lottery? Or three and we go to 15?
You went to 15, you would actually have four more.
No.
You could add the clerical, add the administrator, and then you have one that's open. You can put the parent and then you add three more.
Oh.
If you go to 15.
Correct. No, two more.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. You had me. Yeah.
Higher math.
Fancy addition.
Um, one thing that Tracy Novak is doing is she's trying to schedule a meeting with all the PTOs. Uh, she is meeting with all the faculties on October 7th and October 14th. And somewhere in that same timeframe, she's trying to schedule a meeting with all the PTOs. She has all the contact information of the PTO presidents so that she can try to make that happen.
And I think that's worth mentioning because even if individuals aren't a part of the screening committee, people's voices are still being heard. She is out there, she's collecting data, she's talking to people and trying to understand what people's priorities are. And I think that's one of the main reasons that we went with MASC, right? Because they communicated to us that that was how they structured their process and that was important to us.
And she had the highest response for the opening of a survey.
I, what's on my list of questions to Greg is, what, what's the response rate been so far? Because we said we're going to.
So I don't know the exact number of there, but when we sent out the message to all of staff and everybody that was in the database for the ELPS community, they got the highest response rate to that survey that was sent out on an opening day that she's ever had. That was her comment back.
Wow.
And also the survey is up on the webpage. We've been circulating the QR code at open house evenings.
And the PTO, well, at least the two PTOs I follow, three, I think, have, have posted it through social media.
Yeah, so it's, it's getting out there.
I was, I was getting ready this morning and I heard Tracy's voice. I look up at the big E, it was Tracy they interviewed.
Building.
Right, yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I said, I know her.
Like, oh, me too.
Not in a suit, but.
Aw, she was here.
All right, that's great.
Yeah.
I think about the survey, there's a lot of closed responses there. I didn't, I didn't know, I thought maybe it's something changed in the order from when it first was released and then is now, but maybe not. Because I looked at it really quickly.
Didn't, do you know if it changed?
I haven't.
So I think in terms of tabulating, there's not a lot of open response. The first two questions are open response, but like in terms of characteristics, those are all closed, so.
But there is another.
Another what?
There was an other, yes.
You can click it in. Put something in, yeah.
I think we should go to 15 just based on what, the direction the conversation is going tonight. My opinion. But it's not perfect, but.
It's a big group.
It is, but.
So we would be searching for a community member and an additional parent?
If we go to 15, we would have, well, if we go with the second administrator and the executive secretary, yes, that would leave three slots. And so how we break that down?
And we don't, there's been no other administrator, anyone else that's expressed interest?
Just, no, right, just the two?
Two. It could make the time commitment.
Yeah, that, that.
Others in here.
Okay.
There's a wire.
Same, in the same vein, I would just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no, they've exhausted, they're exhausted.
Thank you for asking that, but.
Yeah. And I think you could put it out and we might not get, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll get three, I think, but.
If we put it out.
You put three or just one spot out? And stay at 13?
You may have that unity spot available because, uh, that they got a lot of, uh, as of Friday, they had not, had gotten a lot of unity response.
And those are the pair professionals?
The professionals.
So that could be another spot then, boom.
Could be, but you know, that's still open.
I'm sorry, I just want to bring to your attention that there's not a custodian on here either. So just to make sure that if, I don't want that to come back at the group.
Uh, I think not having a para, and you said somebody in special ed expressed an interest?
Yes.
Is justification, you know? I, I think I'd like to see some special ed representation. And I was thinking about community or parent rap, but you know, you're asking someone who may not want to disclose, like.
Yeah, right. Bring up a good point.
In addition to the administrator or making?
Well, if we take the administrator who's from special ed, I think that we interest coverage. For the celebrities representing special ed, because we don't have para.
We don't know that we don't have a para. I was just saying they hadn't gotten any response Friday, but that's still open. You know, they're awaiting, they've set the, the date for when they'll do their lottery. They may get, they may get names this week.
I mean, I know we have parents and community members who are involved in special ed in other districts, not necessarily as their children too.
Yeah.
And some of those folks, I think, have, they've been asking questions.
Well, are we in agreement on the administrators, the two administrators?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the clerk.
And the executive secretary. Okay, so that brings us to 12. We can advertise.
One community, one.
One for now and see what happens with the other spot that might be questionable. The will of the committee. I think 15 gets large, but like I said, I'm not, not willing to do it.
Like you said, you're not even sure how much interest you're going to get. That's, it is a large time commitment, so that would go out. So depending on what happens, maybe at your next meeting, you could.
And then when we pick it randomly, the person?
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, I don't know, unless you want to get into that, write a paragraph about what you think you're going to bring to the search.
Yeah, those are tough though, we've been through those, you know?
Search committee for the search committee.
Lottery is a much simpler process.
So are we at a consensus?
I'm definitely in favor of another parent spot because I think, I think giving everybody a chance to do that because, you know?
Nope. Okay, so I would take a motion to reestablish the committee at thirteen members, including the original ten, adding a second administrator, the executive secretary, and opening one slot to a parent who will be picked by lottery.
Sure, I can repeat it back, but I will try to make, make a motion, oh
Go ahead.
Make a motion to, uh, establish the search committee as thirteen, adding a second administrator, secretary, and an additional parent.
Excellent. Motion made by Carrie. Second by Antonella, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, that carries four to zero. Okay, thank you, good discussion. Okay, moving right along, we have the approval of the Burchan Park Middle School eighth grade field trip to Sunny's Place on Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty-six.
So, in, in all of your packet, package, you have a, um, letter, uh, of support from Burchan Park Middle School Principal Steve Pearson, then you have the two advisors, um, Amy Singh and Katie Riley, uh, and this is a change, uh, it's still out of state, but it's a change of venues. They traditionally had gone to, um, where had they gone to, High Meadows? And, uh, now they've changed it to Sunny's Place. Eighth grade, end of the year trip.
Any questions? Sunny's Place, Sunny's Place is
Really?
And
Great, great kids, yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
The other one was good, I thought it was more like team building and like active.
Now they just beep off around.
I think the other days have changed in the last few years, but I've heard that.
Yeah.
Us, yeah, but it's not the same as it used to. The denture park and stores, like, I wish it was more, I wish it were a little more active.
Yeah.
Not like, you know, but, you know.
How is this funded?
Uh, it's a combination of student, uh, fees, and, um, through the PTO also helps with it, as well as, uh, the class, uh,
Yeah, that's why
They have money
How much?
Fundraisers.
Wasn't there something about out of state?
Perhaps the buses are expensive.
Um,
Does that change?
In terms of, it was for nursing.
That we're
But this should be, it should be at that point, cuz that was supposed to change in October.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? None, I wouldn't ask that someone move to
I moved to work up to Sunny's.
Motion made by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Antonella, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that carries four to zero. You, and finally, uh, request to advertise on school district property high school football team, booster club.
So I, I believe, um, this is all coming through the youth football organization. Uh, they've gone out and they have eight, uh, sponsors, who have put forth, uh, designs that they would, uh, then create, uh, the high school? I don't think it's the high school, uh,
Okay.
I thought it was youth football coming from
They have it on here, the high school, or is this us who filled that out?
I don't know, high school football.
Maybe, okay, so it could be the high school booster.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, you might be right.
Yep.
So, the, the contact person up top, uh, Lisa Perron, uh, seems to be the contact who has been working with us in central office, and then there are individual contacts for each of the companies, each of the sponsors. All of them seem to be the hanging banner signs that would be placed out on the fence during the contest, and take the fence for the contest, throw it, and put back up for the next contest.
Do we have any existing I think, I think sponsors are the kinds of businesses that we would let advertise.
Yeah, so the, uh, there was a lot of discussion, there's a new advertisement policy that specifically, uh, looks at organizations that meet the mission, um, and intent of the Islam Meadow Public Schools.
Which these all seem to.
Yeah, everybody saw them, there's, there's an example of each of them, yep, the signs, yep. Um, okay, and they know they have to put them up and take them down every game.
We're gonna reiterate that, but that's been the discussion, uh, up to this point. It, it falls then on the boosters themselves doing
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and ask, does someone to move to approve the request?
I moved to approve the request to advertise on school district property for Islam Meadow High School Football.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion? Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, that carries four to zero. Yep.
Don't let them know.
Okay. And with that, we've come to the end of our meeting. Anna, thank you for being here for your first meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, Sean, thank you for recording on LCAT, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Still move.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by Amy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, that carries four to zero, thank you, we are adjourned.